I saw her earlier.
Jolie Houston is present.
Julie.
And Eric Ramakrishnan is also here.
Yeah, he's gonna be here too for the SB nine questions.
Just so the commission's aware, I did start the recording. I didn't know exactly when you'd start.
John, do you want to shoot Jude maybe another link or something? Because I know I had problems getting on.
There's Jude's iPad.
Dude, hey Jude. Hey guys, sorry about that. For whatever reason, I couldn't launch the meeting, so.
We know.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think as Sean was stating, it wasn't an issue with the link, but I think for whatever reason, we're, we're moving over to Zoom as our new city platform for virtual meetings. And so I think we'll hopefully not experience these problems, but I think there is maybe Sean needed to flip something to sort of start the meeting and then everybody got let in. But anyways, I think we're all here and we can begin.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start. Welcome to June FERC Design Review Commission Meeting. Let's go ahead and establish a quorum. I'll call your name, just say aye. Sam?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Frank?
Aye.
And David is aye, so all five commissioners are here. Sean or Steve, are you aware of any public comments that are going to be made that are not on the agenda for today?
Chair Blockus, we are, we have not been notified of any person or party who would like to provide a, discuss an item not on the agenda. If there is any person who would like to speak regarding an item not on the agenda, if you'd like to please raise your hand or please unmute yourself and provide us your name, which is optional. And please provide your comment. We do not have anybody that's raised their hand and no one has muted themselves. So we currently have no public comment regarding something not on the agenda.
We'll go ahead and go on to the consent calendar. The Design Review Commission minutes from last time. Do we have any comments or do we have a motion?
Chair Blockus, I have a correction. I believe the items I was recused. I just want to make sure it's exactly what I said. I believe I say I have a business involvement, not, not the financial involvement. I know maybe a little difference, but yeah, I think I would like to correct that one.
Okay.
Yeah. So page three.
Okay, so noted. Anything else? Yeah, I, I have one that also is going to revolve around our scheduling for tonight. At the end of last time, we had a meeting and an agreement to have a meeting and further in regards to this is Design Review and Planning Commission and all of that getting together in regards to SB nine. And we were going to have a meeting first thing, schedule got kind of goofed around. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and and approach that first. So have item number four. That's on today's schedule. SB nine Objective Standards Commission Feedback. Have that as item number two, move item two and three back one. I'd like to schedule at most 45 minutes for that. Because that's what we agreed to in the initial, seeing that we do have city liaison, commissioner liaison, as well as council, we should be able to get that taken care of hopefully. Put your timeframe. So Sean, do I need to do anything besides that? Need to go to vote or?
Well, you had a, you were taking comments on the minutes and I did not hear a motion in a second and a vote in minutes first. If you can complete that, that action, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, so let's have.
Because you had corrections.
I didn't have a correction. I wanted to address something that was in the note, in the minutes. That goes to relay for our schedule for today. So it's not a, a correction per se. It's more of a correction of today's meeting.
But Michael had something about his.
If, if I could, we're dealing with the minutes as part of the consent calendar, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if I can suggest that we take up the consent calendar and, and I would recommend if, if the commission are amenable, that somebody make a motion to approve the consent calendar subject to the changes in the minutes that were discussed. And if that passes, then we can take up orders of the day and make any changes to the agenda. And that can be done by consent unless somebody objects and then we can move on to the agenda. That would be my recommendation.
So moved on the minutes.
And to be clear, so moved on the consent calendar with the changes to the minutes proposed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A second where? Someone needs to second it. Chair Blockus, is anyone gonna consent or second that?
Chair, you are, you are muted.
Sorry about that. I had seconded it. I've got two dogs fighting underneath me. I'm trying to get them away. I apologize for that. So it's been seconded. Let's take the vote. Sam?
Aye.
Jude?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
And David, aye. So those have been moved and passed. Now I will go into the change of the items list and move item number four to item number two to be first discussed. And then the second and third items be moved back one. Now Eric, do I need to have a vote on that?
I would just ask, as chair, I would ask if there was an objection to that. And if there's no objection, you can move on. If there's an objection, then you have to take a vote.
Okay, is there an objection by any of the commissioners to that?
No objection.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move into item number four, which is now item number two, the Objective Standards Commission Feedback. So I don't really know where we're to go on, on this, but we did need, I think, clarification from council liaison as well as the attorney as to what specifically they were asking us to do, given that to given the planning commission and the DRC have a little bit different viewpoints on SB nine.
Do you want to hear from council member Meadows, the vice mayor first, or would you like to hear from?
Well, I, I would like to, to get a better understanding probably from Sally in regards to what is our direction from council in regards to SB nine?
And just so before we get started with Vice Mayor and Council Liaison Meadows. Everyone, I'm the new Development Services Director for the City of Los Altos, Nick Zorn. So nice to virtually meet all of you. Hopefully we can all meet in person soon. With that being said, I just want to one, take a brief moment to cover just the, the ground rules essentially for going back and forth with the council liaison, since it's not something that is always done at the meetings, although they are obviously always here to help the commission as needed. Just reading this verbatim from the commission handbook, council members shall respect the separation between policymaking and advisory commissions by A, not attempting to lobby or influence the commissions on any of the items under their consideration. B, attending the meetings of assigned commissions, but not taking a position on the item before the commission. And C, not voting at the commission's meeting on any item. However, they are at for D, assisting the commission. And for scheduling recommendations to be heard by the council. So just kind of wanted to touch on that and Eric will obviously be able to help interject on certain questions, just so that we don't have any Brown Act violations this evening. In regards to what the council liaison is here to be able to provide this evening. Thank you.
So does that mean the floor is mine?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
With sufficient warning and advice. Thank you, Nick, and thank you all this evening. And I'm not sure whether I'm glad or I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, but I think this works out fine. Let's have a conversation tonight. And so briefly, I'm just going to give a couple perspectives before I talk, spend most of my couple of minutes on council direction. But as I think most or all of you know, I'm probably, well, I am the only person in the city right now who's served on DRC, has served on planning commission and is now serving on council. So, which isn't to say I know it all. That's certainly not the case. But I do have a unique perspective, so I hope to share some of that with you tonight. Um, so I viewed the DRC particularly when I sat on it, and I think the same still holds true tonight. And I know you all agree that DRC really is a facilitator in our community. You have a hard job because you're facilitating between our design guidelines and code and homeowners that are trying to build their dream homes and neighbors who inevitably have concerns about change. So you know, it's not an enviable, enviable job. And you folks do a great job coming up with win, win, win solutions, balancing all three of those interests. So I want to thank you for that. And I, I guess I probably should disclose that Jude and I are relatively close neighbors. And so he had and I, he and I had a conversation on this topic. And, and Sam and I, in a different occasion, had a conversation as well. So just in case that's important to mention that I've talked with both of those gentlemen. So it is true that Design Review Commission has had design responsibility for discretionary single family homes. And SB nine will, will not change discretionary responsibility, but will change the direction where single family homes or dwelling units, maybe we should use that more general term dwelling units in town as they are built, are going to be not discretionary under SB nine and are really not discretionary under the ADU ordinance either. So Planning Commission also has design responsibility. They have it for multifamily homes for commercial. And they also have land use responsibility. So if lots splits come into play, that's where planning commission expertise is important. But I think what we need to remember is we're actually all here tonight because under SB nine, Design Review Committee, Commission has no jurisdiction. Planning Commission has no jurisdiction. These are all ministerial approvals. And as such, what we're trying to accomplish is to give guidelines through which staff can go through an objective review on specifically SB nine regarding the conversation tonight. But really also, if we look at all of our dwelling units around town that are supposed to be reviewed under objective standards. So that's what really this exercise about is about. And we of course are keeping in mind that we want to try to preserve Los Altos' character. And that's what you folks are familiar with again, with the discretionary single family home reviews. But in, and this is my opinion, I will identify it as such that whether we're using discretionary or objective standards, or whether we'll be, we're building a single family home with or without ADUs and with or without SB nine units, the best way to achieve compatibility is for a set of rules that allows Los Altos to maintain its character. Of course, that's more an art than a science. But let me with that preamble then go over to some of the direction. Or should I ask if there's any questions before I move over to the council of direction? Anyone have any? No, I don't see any hands. So, okay, so particularly, I thanks to the Design Review Commission for the, the urgent work that you did at the end of last year. And I know that the subcommittee commissioner Ma, commissioner Kirik, you know, did put together great guidelines that we reviewed at council and tweaked and adopted as our urgency resolution for SB nine objective standards to be available January one, when the new law took effect. I, when I spoke with Commissioner Kirik, I had mentioned, and we didn't know this in December, and in fact, we didn't really know this until March, when the HCD SB nine fact sheet came out, and that's been in the packet for this meeting and the last meeting. So hopefully you've had a chance to review that. But HCD said something that I think is important that we didn't know at the time when we were developing our urgency rules. So in their guidance, it's on page seven, the last second, the last page, it says, "A local agency should proceed with caution when adopting local ordinance that would impose unique development standards on units proposed under SB nine, but that would not apply to other developments." So, so where I think this exercise maybe looks a little different than it did when you looked at it at the end of last year is that in essence, maybe the task is harder. So we have Los Altos in all its complexity. Again, SB nine units potentially moving forward, ADU and regular single family homes, if we want to call it that. So how do we apply a set of uniform standards that will make sense as staff tries to review these projects ministerially? And looking at this, I know what commissioners Ma and Kirik did was they said, what are all the problems that we faced as we review homes at DRC? And I recognize those problems from when I was on DRC. Balconies present issues in terms of privacy. Plate heights potentially, you know, can affect mass and bulk and all that type of thing. But I think council appreciated that and incorporated a lot of that in the urgency ordinance. But I think now we have to look at what is the best answer, both examining what we put in place in December and also moving forward, thinking of compatibility across all the different dwelling units on Los Altos. So I'm looking now at the staff report, which is page three, page 94 of the packet for tonight. And it says items directed by council at the December 21st council meeting. And I think at that time is we had suggested that planning commission and DRC both coming from different places, but with both with design experience and planning commission with additional land use and other elements to help us develop longer term objective standards. So some of the questions on page three were specific to the, the the urgency resolution we put in. So whether building colors should be regulated. The council had discussion about if you regulate building colors for SB nine. But for example, there's an existing primary unit and you're now regulating colors. And maybe that primary unit doesn't fit the palette that we're regulating. Is that a good idea? For example, we also, what we're concerned about the screening vegetation, because of course, in any units, particularly if ones take advantage of a four foot setback in the rear or side yards, screening vegetation becomes particularly important. So council had a question of should we define that differently? And what you do is look at this, these December, the urgency resolution, and you can see specifically how we phrased it, which largely came out of DRC and the subcommittee. We also talked about definition and requirements for floor area ratio. That could potentially be something that Planning Commission might have more to say about. But that was again, something that council wanted direction on as we look at our longer term ordinance that we hope to adopt. We talked about plate heights. We did adopt a plate height in the urgency resolution. But that was on the basis of this, it was presented as a, a most frequent plate height. But I know I've sat in a number of DRC meetings and plate heights are really kind of all over the place, partly based on design and style. And so, you know, that's one question council wanted to be examined. This is the question about moving on to the next page, whether affordable housing requirements can be incorporated. I think that's referring and Eric and Mr. Ramakrishnan can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's probably referring to whether we would deed restrict those or not. But that's probably a council policy and I alone can't answer that question because well, actually Eric, you might even be able to clarify that we may or may not even be able to do that. So that's probably not a question that Design Review would think about. And then further research and consideration for street access and safety. We've had a lot of comment, particularly about streets that where houses front on to the backyards of other of other houses such as Avalon, I think is, is one near me where I visited the street. I think we actually have that codified, but that's still a question. Should we make be explicit and incorporate that into? We don't want driveways coming off both the front of a property and the back of a property. Or do we? I shouldn't answer the question. I should say the question is, do we want to codify that we don't want driveways coming out of both the front and the back of a, of a property? So I don't know if, if, I mean, if I go through, well, I guess there's still let me go through the next three, and then there's some more that staff brought up. And so maybe they would be best to talk about it. But the definition of site coverage, for example, do we need to think about a requirement where we have hardscape versus softscape? And might that be? You know, and how does that affect drainage and stormwater, et cetera? Definition of floor area and also garage door design and materials. And one other thing I'd add in that isn't necessarily in these notes, but could also be as we look to having combat compatible rules across different dwelling units based, based on HCD guidance. Do we want to be more prescriptive or less prescriptive in terms of, you know, some of the criteria that are laid out in the urgency ordinance? So I don't know if I, if it makes sense. Eric or Chair Blockus or even Nick for me to go through the items recommended by staff, because that wasn't direction from council, but I can if you want me to.
Um, I think probably it's the best use of time in order to stay on the council directed items. And then if we still have some time, as the chair noted, that we'd like to stick to a 45 minute limit on this item, then we can touch base on some of those. And also those are something that we can open up for further discovery after this evening.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Nick. So I'll stop there. I will make just one more comment though, and I, and I did listen to the last meeting. So and there was some concern about, or I heard it vocalized that DRC felt that they had a constraint mandate. That's not what you said, and I'm probably praising, phrasing it poorly. But you were focused on containment. And there was some comments around planning commission focused on potentially opening up the ability to use SB nine. So, and I really don't think that your feedback needs to be necessarily focused on whether you do want to constrain or you want to liberal, liberalize or constrain development. Because I think most of these questions in terms of the detail and looking through that urgency resolution can be addressed independent. They're not necessarily focused on whether they are constraining or not. Though I guess you could argue that some of the, the plate heights might be constraining. But again, looking at it with another eye and after a few more months and looking at the HCD SB nine fact sheet, which we didn't have at the time. So first of all, one question, the question would be, looking back at what you did and knowing what we know now, what would you recommend? And then looking specifically at what council asked, as I just went through, would be another thing. And I don't think you have to worry so much about the mindset of, of allowing or disallowing development. I think it can be done in sort of an agnostic way, but maybe that's simplistic. So I will stop there and see if there are any questions.
Eric, did you want to speak at this or should we open it up to questions for the commissioners first?
You're the chair. I will follow your direction.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you go ahead and speak and then we'll open it up for questions for either yourself or Vice Mayor Meadows.
Okay. The vice mayor said most of what I want to say. I'm going to try to focus my comments in, in sort of four themes. The first being, you know, sort of what was the thinking behind generally bringing these guidelines back for further discussion? The, the second being, why are we asking both DRC and planning commission for feedback? The third being kind of this idea of you know, like the, like the vice mayor, I, I don't want to sort of push a direction, but I do sort of want to speak in a general way to this idea of being more or less restrictive or what that means. And lastly, just because it was brought up, I want to talk about the deed restriction issues super briefly. In, in terms of what the thinking was for bringing this back for further discussion, I, I think the simple answer is we were rushed. You know, SB nine passed in, in September and was signed by the governor. And, and then we had a very short time to read and understand it. It's a very, it's a law that leaves a lot of ambiguity and it needed to be analyzed and understood. And, and then we had to figure it all before the first applications came in after January first. And so I think that with the help of the subcommittee here, staff put together some great guidelines, but they were rushed. And so there was a concern that if we had more time to think through this, would we come up with a different set of guidelines? And so the thought was, okay, this will be something to have in place as of January first. But we, we don't know if we want to give this more thought. And you know, once we start to implement this and see how it works out, we want to revisit it and decide if we should have given this more thought. If, if we would have had that luxury. And so that's sort of why, that was the whole idea of why bring this back again. And then specifically as the guidelines were going through the council, the council, as, as the vice mayor indicated, had questions and things that they wanted thought through more clearly, very specific things, not just generally, do we want to think more about this? But here are some things we want to think more about. And so, you know, we want your general input on them. Having more time to think through with more process involved. But we also want you to address the specific things that council asked. Why did we suggest both DRC and planning commission? Both commissions are involved in Both commissions are involved in design review of different kinds. You are more involved in single family home designer view. Planning Commission is more involved in multi-family home designer view. Let's be honest, SB nine is a hybrid of those two things. It essentially turns single family lots throughout the city into four plexes. And so it would be helpful to us to have your perspective, I think, is going to be very different than Planning Commission's perspective. And I think it would be helpful for the council to have both perspectives and to find out where they might differ and where they might be the same. And if there might be, you know, sort of a third perspective that comes out of combining the two, that that's helpful. And so that was the thinking behind involving the Planning Commission as well, even though they're not traditionally involved in single family homes. SB nine projects are not necessarily single family projects. And so the joint input, the thinking was would result in something better than getting input from just one or the other. In terms of sort of this general idea of do we want to be more or less restrictive? I I do want to clarify when the fact sheet talks about not treating SB nine projects differently than other housing development projects, what it's speaking to is the issue of intensity of development. So SB three thirty and SB eight tell us that we cannot adopt standards for development of housing development projects that reduce the level of intensity from what was allowed in twenty eighteen. And by intensity, I'm talking about density and things like setbacks and height and and bulk and those kinds of things. We can't reduce those kinds of standards from what we had in effect in twenty eighteen. And what a lot of cities have done with SB nine is they've come up with standards that allow you, even though SB nine is about building more units on a lot. A lot of cities have come up with standards that say, okay, you can build more units, but but they have to be smaller units than you could otherwise build. So that the end result is less development on the lot than if you were just doing one unit. HCD has taken a position against that. They interpret the laws not allowing for that. And what they're trying to tell you is you can come up with your objective standards for SB nine projects, but those shouldn't result in less development on the lot than what would have been allowed without SB nine. So you you know, in terms of the look and feel of the building envelope, those kinds of standards, we've never had objective standards that regulated that kind of thing in the city. It's always been through a subjective case by case process. And so to now say that we have to have objective standards when we didn't have them, of course, the standards are going to be different. Because before the standards were, we look at everything case by case. So of course, we have to look at SB nine projects differently than other types of 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 projects. But it shouldn't result in less intensity to follow HCD's guidance. So I want to make, I want to clarify that. That idea that we've never had these objective standards for sing for single family lots sort of begs the question, do we want to be more prescriptive? We were certainly more prescriptive, as it turns out, than most cities in in the state and what we came up with. Because we were, we were cognizant of the fact that we can't go through on a case by case way and review projects anymore. They they all have to sort of, if if you can check the box, then we have to approve them. So we were trying to be fairly prescriptive, but the some feedback that that we've received is maybe we were too prescriptive. And we're preventing people from achieving better architectural designs because of we don't allow certain things. I don't know if that's true. I'm not an architect. I'm not a planner. I'm not going to pretend to have expertise to evaluate that feedback. But you do have that expertise to evaluate that feedback. And so, you know, part of your mission is to consider that. And lastly, I'll I'll speak to the question about deed restrictions. That's not what we're asking you about. That's that's a policy legal question. We're asking you for your design expertise. If we were to impose deed restrictions, that would have to be done through an ordinance and it would have to be done at the council level. And I have legal concerns about that, but that's not on the agenda tonight. So I'm not going to go into more detail. But that's, that's not what we're asking you about and I want to be clear about that. And with that, I will stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions that get directed at me.
Okay, we've got by my calculations, probably about another fifteen minutes. Because we we got to this item about ten fifteen minutes into it. So fellow commissioners, what questions do you have for either Vice Mayor Meadows or or Attorney Eric? Anybody?
Vice Mayor, you know, I have a question. I think the the overall direction, like I have, you know, for the SB nine, for the city of Los Altos, is that whether or not we want to be more flexible on the floor area ratio on the design. Or are we going to that direction or the opposite direction? Are we going to be more conservative with SB nine project? For for example, you know, things like open up the FAR, you know, if floor area ratio. So I want to hear the city. I know from the state level, the state always want the city that the the purpose of SB nine is that they want all the city to encourage more housing units. Right? And then I'm not sure on the state level. Other than encouraging more housing units, are they also asking the city to increase the floor area or not? I I think that we need to, I I want to learn more about the direction, the general direction from the state and also from the city level. That, so we have a, on the DRC side, we can have a better understanding. What's the consensus, you know, whether from the the residents, the local residents or from the council or from the planning? So what's the 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 general census of the general direction we're going to have? Or we are trying to achieve here? What's the goal?
So Eric, if you want me to go first and then you can do tidying up after I speak. So we don't have direction yet. SB nine does not require any change in that, so we can maintain as is if we want. And one thing I meant to mention and didn't in my first remarks is that, as you all know, we're going through the housing element process. So perhaps that question could come up through the housing element. But council has certainly not considered it. And so we have no direction in Los Altos. And there is no need through the state law, through SB nine to do that. And Eric, please chime in.
Yeah, I I fundamentally agree that in in terms of something like floor area ratio. Again, if we accept HCD's interpretation in the fact sheet that the council, that the vice mayor referred to, and I do accept that interpretation. I I will say not all city attorneys agree with it. But you you certainly couldn't reduce floor area from what was allowed before SB nine. And I I would discourage that. Now, whether or not you allow increased floor area to help accommodate those extra units, I think is a question of policy. Certainly, HCD would probably like us to do that, but the law doesn't require us to do that. So the question is, do we want to facilitate those extra units? And and that, that's a question of policy. I I have personal views on those, but I'll hold back. And then I think it's also a question of design. It it may be, again, I'm not an architect, but it may be that if we're more flexible about something like floor area, in return, we could achieve better design in other ways. I've heard that said. I'm not an architect. I am not able to evaluate that statement. That's, that's a question for you all to decide.
And if I may add on to that, because what Eric said just reminded me of one of the questions I wrote down for myself that if appropriate, I would bring up, which is, are we actually? So if you take a restriction mindset, are our current standards, whether they be ADU standards or or even single family home review process, are we actually precipitating and motivating SB nine applications because of the way, for example, our ADU ordinance is written? Or even our review process for single family homes? Cause I've heard several of the SB nine applications are actually people who are just essentially wanting a bigger ADU, for example. And so if you wanted to think creatively about, well, you know, because I I really think it's it's not just SB nine, that is what in front is in front of you today. But it's our whole housing stock, which includes ADUs. And so if if you wanted to go along the lines that Commissioner Ma is talking about, might you motivate a different kind of development if you, if you recommended? That might be out of the purview, but I really do think that as we go through the housing element process, any insights you have on, you know, how we can motivate the kind of design we want or the kind of units we want, then that would be helpful. So I'm, that probably got kind of cryptic at the end, but if it didn't make sense, I apologize.
All right, okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Eric. You know, I I just want to share that I also did some research on other adjacent city. You know, some city, they really encourage SB nine. So they lay, H opened up a lot of requirement, I mean, less requirement, less restrictive, more encouragement. But another city put more requirement on SB nine that tried to discourage people go through SB nine. So they have still to go through the design review. So it's up to the, I think the city's general direction or from the the planning or upper level. So I I think that's why I asked the question originally, to try to see, you know, find out what's the general direction from the city or from the council.
And you've raised an important, sorry, were you done? You raise an important legal issue that I want to clarify. Whether we're more generous than we were before SB nine, to the extent that to the, to the extent that SB nine doesn't require us to be more generous, that is a policy question for you to consider. But I will tell you that it should not be our policy goal to discourage people from using SB nine specifically. And so cities that are doing that and cities that are saying they're doing that, the Department of Justice in Sacramento and HCD are coming down hard on them. And so you know, it is an appropriate policy question. Do we want to be more generous than we have to? It's not an appropriate policy question. Do we want to discourage SB nine? And and that is a fine distinction, but I want to make it clear. And so thank you for raising that.
Thank you, Eric, for raising that, because I was going to butt in as well, saying we don't want to invite litigation at this point. We we haven't.
Right. And and with allows me to chime in maybe for the last time, because someone's going to get the hook, Sam, and pull me off stage, right?
You're good.
He knows which hook I'm talking about. But anyway, no matter what units, you know, whether it's an ADU, it's an SB nine unit. And but my, mind you, an SB nine unit can be a single primary family home on a lot that just chooses to go through an objective review process to to avoid you guys, maybe, you know? I mean, who knows what their reasons could be, but all of these people are going to be our neighbors. And you know, I I think we want to be as as objective and welcoming as we can, just because they're going to be our neighbors. So anyway, that's just my personal philosophy.
Yeah, one other questions I have, and we need to pretty close wrap it up is, Eric, you were talking, getting back, well, we want to have standards that apply to both SB nine and regular applications, et cetera, et cetera, dating back to two thousand eighteen. Well, back in two thousand eighteen, we had several holes in our existing requirements that needed to be referenced and DRC was sort of cleaning those holes up. And so with SB nine, it's asking us to go back and not make any differences from two thousand eighteen or whatever those standards were at that point in time, which were faulty in that point in time. So shouldn't we take the look at, let's clarify, you know, for, an example might be, you could have a single story with a living room, you know, when does it count as double for floor area ratio based on height? And as a two story, we have certain height requirements and all that that come into play. And there are some for for a single story, but you can make a single story look quite tall by just having a giant, you know, eighteen foot box or whatever, as long as they're seventeen foot box that sits underneath the roof to have that kind of fit in. So the the subjective aspect of it tries to sort of fix some of the holes that the original code or whatever has. But if we're required to with SB nine to not make any differences relative to what our current standards are, if our current standards really, in in some cases, don't work, that seems fruitless, to say the least. And so that's one question I have, you know, how do we make objective standards that improve, that allow people to have the objective standards that they need to go through and make a good design, et cetera, on their own? When the standards that we have already don't do that, and that's kind of why DRC is involved. And then my last question or my second question would be, who's choosing the SB nine route versus DRC route? I mean, have we talked with, and I know it's very, very early in the process, on why they're doing? Cause I had a fellow agent talk to me today. It's like, which route do I go? I mean, we want to be understanding the neighborhood. We want to do that. We want to, you know, go through there. But just the process of DRC and then, you know, going through that is much longer than doing SB nine. And their ideal is trying to get, you know, ideally, they would build the same thing they would in under DRC under SB nine, just because it's quicker.
Yeah. So the second question, unless staff can answer that question, I I I don't know the answer. The 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 first question, I just want to be clear, because I don't think I was before. What what HCD has said interpreting SB three thirty and SB eight is is that we can't use SB nine in a way that reduces the development intensity of the site. So I didn't mean to suggest that everything that we had in place as a standard in two thousand eighteen has to be standard we apply now. It can't be, because everything we have historically had in place has been, at least in recent history, has been subjective. And now we're being required to have objective standards. They they can't be the same by definition. So I don't mean to say that whatever we had in place for housing in two thousand eighteen is what we have to have in place now. We just can't reduce development intensity in the standards that we have. And so maybe an oversimplified way of thinking of that, that I think is is sort of an appropriate guidepost for us, is we shouldn't be reducing the amount of overall floor area that a that a property owner can build. So what I mean by that is, is that some cities are taking the position that we can require, yeah, you can build your two homes under SB nine, but we want smaller homes than you can build without SB nine. And 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 those two homes combined need to be even smaller than the single home you could build without SB nine. That's reducing the intensity of the site. And HCD is saying that violates SB eight and three thirty. So that's what I'm suggesting you be careful about. It's not reducing the development intensity of the site. Now, whether you well, I won't go off on a tangent, I'm sorry. So that's the thing you need to be careful of. When it comes to what I call envelope, shape of the envelope standards, you know, like what, things like color and plate heights and 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 articulation and things like that. As far as I'm concerned, that's sort of fair game for us to to talk about. It we just can't reduce the intensity of the site from what was allowed in two thousand eighteen. Does that help clarify?
And and just I want to speak up, that's well understood. We understand the law. And actually, we're increasing the intensity of the site by the nature of SB nine because we're building a second unit with an additional eight hundred square feet. So somebody that goes through SB nine has more intensity than a conventional application.
And that's great. In some cities, they are finding ways to do the opposite. And and the vice mayor pointed out the the comment that's in the fact sheet. And so I wanted to add some color and explain where that comment was coming from. And and so that's what I'm speaking to.
Yeah, and the subcommittee clearly understands.
Yes, and I I am not trying to in any way criticize the work that you've done. I'm just trying to answer the question.
Okay, and I lost my train of thought there, but you know, it, to me, it's going to, it's a long discussion. And I don't know if this forum is the best to go through all those individual items. Yeah, you know, I'm happy getting to the
And you know, I'm happy getting to the getting to the task at hand. I'm happy to meet with Michael again and kind of go through the staff's suggestions and, you know, and come back with a more developed response. At least on my end, I think Michael and I can do that offline as a continuation of our prior subcommittee. So I don't know if that's helping move this along, and I don't know if other commissioners would like to participate. But, you know, these are this is a big task and you know, happy to help out where we can. I just want to make sure that at least the DRC, who hears these issues consistently every meeting, if you want to sit in on the tonight's meeting, and I think you are, you're going to hear some of these same issues that we brought up. So we we looked at the subcommittee as an opportunity to, you know, make some acknowledgement of the issues that we've seen in the past. And I don't think anything that Michael and I subjected opens us up to any kind of litigation because it was in no way restrictive. And it would be very similar to what you would hear at a DRC meeting regardless. But our biggest concern is like balconies. You know, we talked about balconies every day. And, you know, I'm not going to go into specifics on this, but these are the the privacy impact is critical to us. And I don't know how you manage that when you allow, you know, two story structures four feet off the property line, other than, you know, the daylight plane requirement that we have in place now. So I don't know. That's where I stand at this.
Okay. Any other?
Final comment, Chair Blockus, I just.
Yeah, go ahead. You'll be the final speaker on this and then we'll go ahead and because we do actually have applicants waiting patiently for us.
Yes, I appreciate. So I was just going to say that the, you know, we're all trying to uphold Los Alamos' character charm, all the rest of it. So the ideal scenario is if we drive around town, none of us know which houses of regular single family home went through design review if necessary, which is utilized SB nine, maybe even which is an ADU. Of course, its placement and back might tell us that. But if so, when when you propose something, think about, is this going to make it? Or a question to ask yourself is, does this make it in? Or does this signal to those from the street? Oh, yeah, there's another SB nine project because it's squat and has no, you know, whatever, whatever the the rules might be. So to me, I think that's one of the questions, how do we preserve our character by ideally, we don't know, which is an SB nine project? So that's just a potential.
And Chair Blockus, I know you're eager to move on, but under the Brown Act, we should pause and see if there are public comment. If that ends the the discussion by the commission.
Yeah, let's go ahead and have that end the conversation. Sean, let's open it up for any public comment on this issue. If there is anyone out there, if you could raise your hand and you'll have two minutes.
Chair Blockus, there is no person who has raised their hand. If there is someone who has not raised their hand or is having problems with that, please unmute yourself and please provide your name, which is optional, and provide your comment. Thank you. Nobody has muted themselves, Chair Blockus. We have no public comments.
Okay, so do we need any? We I can just close that comment. We can move on to the next, or do we have to have some sort of resolution to have Jude and Mike continue or Jude, Mike, and if someone else wants to do it?
Can it be more than two?
You're, I'm sorry, you're five members total, right?
Yeah, no, but what I meant was to for that subcommittee to get together. Do we need to have a resolution at this point referencing that? Or can we just end the discussion as it is and move on to the next topic?
And I apologize, I haven't been at all your meetings. Have you formally appointed them as a subcommittee in the past?
Yes.
They were, yes.
And does anybody have any objection to that?
No.
No.
Okay, then it sounds like you're already the subcommittee. Now, if you are going to be meeting with the Planning Commission people, that's a new commission in and of itself, an ad hoc commission. But it's subject to the Brown Act. If you're just meeting on your own, it's you're less than a quorum and you can meet. You may decide at some point that you want to have a public meeting and solicit input, but you're not required to do that.
So the question, two questions I would pose to you, Eric, is my assumption is we want to just meet as DRC as a subcommittee. But I'm reading into it. And then secondly, is there any other commissioner who wants to join in with the two that are already part of the subcommittee?
So you know, it's entirely up to you as a commission, whether you want to meet individually, whether you want your subcommittee to meet individually or whether you want to form a larger subcommittee with Planning Commission. And it sounds like it's already been decided, if I understand correctly, that you really want to have your own subcommittee, and that's fine. The question of if you want to expand your subcommittee, you can do that too. But then it becomes a Brown Act committee, and you just need to be mindful of that. We're all used to comply with the Brown Act, that's not a problem. But I just want to make sure that you're aware of the difference.
Okay, as a commission member, I do not want to join the two members.
Okay. Eric, I think one thing I want to make clear is what I understand is it was going to be a subcommittee of DRC. They were going to go off and do what they wanted to do, come back, report to the DRC body of their recommendation. Planning Commission was going to do their subcommittee, go off, do their thing, come back to the Planning Commission. I understand that they were never going to form a new legislative body. I might be mistaken, but I understood that was what they were going to do. And so if there's, if they, if there is some direction where you're going to go and form a new legislative body
Right.
with with Planning Commission and DRC and be the SB nine committee, that would be subject to the Brown Act. Also, if the two subcommittees want to meet and not form a new subcommittee, that won't be Brown Act because they would just still be reporting back to their their respective commissions. So but I don't think there's going to be a new a new committee formed unless I miss something, how this has evolved, so.
I think that was what was previously decided by DRC as it was explained to me. So if the DRC, if that's matches your understanding, and that's the route you still want to go down, then the two members of the subcommittee are free to meet whenever and as often as they want to. And if they ever want to have a notice public hearing to solicit input from the community, that is certainly an option as well.
Okay, and if if there is an additional member to that committee, it then becomes a Brown Act. Okay.
Exactly.
So, Michael and Jude, are you okay with continuing to work on that as a twosome and then report back your improvements as you see them to us? And then my assumption is then we, as part of some meeting somewhere, pass it on to council. Is that correct? I'm talking, what? So that's, I'm sorry, that's a two parter. Jude and Michael, you guys want to meet and continue this? So that's question one.
I think we are, Michael.
Yeah. So then, once they meet, get together, do their thing, they report it back to DRC.
Yes.
We then, as a body DRC, then do we present that to City Council?
Yeah, they're going to come back and report and and you are either going to adopt the recommendations as the DRC position at a regular public meeting, or you might tweak it, and then that becomes your recommendation to the City Council.
That's right. Okay, great. Okay, I think we have clarification. We'll go ahead and since we don't need to vote on anything, we'll go ahead and move on to actual applicants. So if applicant for six twenty nine Benvenu Avenue, SC twenty two dash zero 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 nine is online. If you could just raise your hand or whatnot, or Sean, if you already know they're online, then that's great. Could we have the project manager discuss the project?
I'm the advocate, my name is Kyle Chen.
Great, so you are here and then project manager, Healy, could you go ahead and present the application?
Sure thing, can everyone hear me?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Oh. Sean, if you're the host, can you enable my screen sharing?
Done.
Okay, thank you. So I will be presenting what was item two and now item three, a designer review application for six twenty nine Benvenu Avenue, where a new 3,564 square foot two story home is proposed. The subject property is located on an interior lot on Benvenu Avenue, east of South Clark Avenue. And Springer Road is over here on the side. So here is an image of the proposed home as well. I don't know if I'm blocking this. As well as the existing home and then the surrounding homes. So this portion of the street includes a mix of upgraded and larger one and two story homes, which you can see here, as well as some older one story homes. This slide includes the proposed site plan. And then this is the zoning table from the staff report. So we have the street and the front yard here. This outline here is the first floor. The shaded area here is the second floor. The proposed setbacks meet or exceed what's required. And in particular, the the side setbacks, this is a narrow lot, so it is subject to somewhat reduced setbacks. But the proposed first floor setbacks are the standard ten feet. There is a large oak tree in the rear yard that's protected and that's proposed to remain. And this slide includes the front elevation of the proposed home. The materials include smooth cement plaster and stone veneer walls, tile roofing and a stained wood entry and garage door. Here we have all four of the elevations. So the design's use of hipped and gabled roof forms and articulated massing is similar to some of the other homes in the area. The first floor plate heights are at nine feet along the sides and the second floor plate heights are at eight feet. The side facing second floor windows have four foot eight inch sill heights, except for this window here, which is above the stair landing. And that's over eight feet above that landing. And then these two bathroom windows are at four foot sill heights. And egress windows face the street or the rear yard. So this is the landscape plan where several existing trees are proposed to remain in the rear yard, including that large protected oak tree in addition to an existing redwood tree. And then there's some existing screen trees along the sides that are proposed to remain, which would minimize privacy impacts. And then I'll just mention in the staff report, there there was a typo in the landscaping and tree section, it says that tree number twenty five is proposed for removal. It should actually say tree twenty seven. And that's an eight inch Victorian box tree. And it's located in over here in the rear yard. And that's due to poor health. So with that, staff recommends that the Design Review Commission approve the application subject to the findings and conditions in the agenda report. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for excuse me, for Ms. Healy?
You can call me Nas.
None for Nas.
I don't have any question.
I just want to clarity, the one tree that was taken down. And originally, they were going to put one tree in that was a bigger tree. And then they asked for a lemon tree and then, but our conditions are set on the bigger tree, correct?
Correct. I mean, it was a separate application to remove that tree previously, and that was approved with a condition for a specific tree type that's comparable to the one that was there. And so that's been incorporated into the draft conditions just to replace or put a replacement tree consistent with that previous removal permit.
Okay, and second question was, there any discussion from the applicant or the applicants architect for the second story windows not to be obscure or some other method to, you know, kind of have privacy but not have obscure windows?
Do you mean obscure, like?
Well, I thought the glass, the glass is I forget how they labeled it, but basically it's, you know, privacy windows upstairs.
Yeah, if I recall, they are shown on the elevation as kind of shaded. So I think that might be obscure glasses, if I recall. The applicant is here, so he may be able to answer that question. But there is some existing landscape or privacy trees screaming that are there that are proposed to remain. And if, you know, during the course of construction, those were damaged or they didn't survive, then those would need to be replaced.
Okay. Any other questions?
None.
Jude?
Now, sorry, you want to go?
No, go ahead, Jude.
Okay, so now, on the I guess it's the tree plan A oh zero dot three. They're showing tree twenty two, which is right behind the feature tree, that beautiful oak. And twenty two is, I would term it a wild pitasporum gone wild. I don't know if my fellow commissioners saw that tree, but is there any concern about from staff about removal of that tree?
I'm going to pull up the plans. So and so you said that was on?
A zero point three, their tree inventory. It's actually a part of the fence protection. It's included in the circle there, right by tree twenty three.
Okay, have it, let me just.
Also shows on all that L one.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I'm sorry. I didn't realize. Oh, Sean is sharing. Okay. So I think you wanted to take a look at that, the photo that they had, which is to the left, sounds like.
A question is, is there any objection from staff as to removal of that tree? Or whatever it is. I don't think that's a tree. I think.
Bushy tree.
Yep.
So twenty two?
Yes.
Correct.
I mean, it was. I don't believe it's a protected size, but it wasn't indicated as being proposed for removal.
It's curious because it's in the tree protection zone, so I was wondering if, you know, why that was.
I mean, it might still be kind of under the drip line of that large oak tree, so maybe it's kind of just captured in that. Okay, area.
I think we can ask the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
None.
Okay.
I have one.
Okay, Frank, go ahead.
So I haven't seen any email correspondence on this project from any of the neighbors budding or not. Is there? Is there anything that came through the office? We haven't seen.
No, all the, there was some correspondence that was included as attachments in the report, but. Since the report, I have not received any other communications from any neighbors.
Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that and move on to the applicant. Either applicant or the applicant's architect, if you'd like to speak.
Sure, so I believe I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Give me one second. So now are you going to use the file that I sent you or should I just use mine?
You should be able to to share your PowerPoint. I mean, I can pull it up, but.
Okay, well, give me one second. I I wasn't prepared for it. I thought I'm just going to speak and and then you control the PowerPoint. So let me.
Okay, I I'm happy to pull it up.
I have it pulled up too. Yeah. One second, I'll have to try how to share. And I have the share screen here, so that's great.
And and to the chair, I will set the timer for ten minutes, which is the standard limit for presentations.
Thank you.
Sorry. Don't think I am able to share at this point. So Nas, can you share?
Sure.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Alright, great. Thank you. So so the first slide. So so good evening commissioners. My name is Kyle Chen. I am the applicant and also the architect for the project. And the homeowner Anh Hua is actually here too and we really appreciate your help and we we know that. I mean, this is a. For for the homeowner is actually a very good project. They have been living here for a while and they their intention is to rebuild a brand new house. And they're going to be staying here, so they're not selling. And so next slide please. So the I'm trying not to repeat a lot of the things that Nas already mentioned, so I I would just focus on the design and architectural standpoint. So as you know, the neighborhood has diverse style of buildings, but. Almost half of all the buildings in the neighbors are two story buildings, including all of the building at the back, the run on the left and then across the street. Next night please. So part of the initial studies to to know more about neighborhood and identify the styles and as you know, most of the styles are ranch style. Some of them are a transition style or modern farmhouse and there's one Mediterranean at the back. Next night please. Our immediate neighbors are both ranch styles and they use a stucco finish on the left and then on the right is they they used a wood bed and board siding. Next like this. So the architectural goal is to provide high quality building frontage appearing to the street. Response to the say environmental force, especially the the south facing advantages of natural light. Pro promote pedestrian friendly elements to building with the with the front porch. Incorporate sustainable energy efficient building system. So we thought about the the solar panels and and other materials that we're going to use. Referenced contestro architectural vocabulary in the neighborhood, including hip roofs, sidings and. And then the tile roofs and and the stucco finish and then use quality lasting materials. Next. So the owner has a taste of Mediterranean style and. And we start the design with identifying some of the signature elements that we like. Such as the enhanced front porch, the turret tower, arch windows, stones and stucco wall finish and tile roofs. Next. So since we knows our direction very well, we we work on different options with subtle difference on the on the Mediterranean style such as the window size. The window treatments and some of the stone patterns and finishes. Next. So in our final design, we let's to have large windows and balance between windows and wall size, especially in the front. One design item is to introduce the lights to the second floor bedroom. I think one of the commissioner mentioned about it. But at at the same time, try to maintain privacy to all our neighbors. So so we provide smaller windows. And and places as high as possible and try to make it all scoops to ensure privacy. But the main goal is to provide daylight and vents to the bedrooms. Next. So this is a views from the southwest corner. Next, southeast corner, sorry. Yeah, and and then again, material includes smooth plaster, artistic rustic stone finish and porch and in the garage and tower roof. Yeah, so that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does the homeowner wish to make any comments?
Hi, I'm the homeowner.
Hello.
Hi.
Do you have any comments you wish to make?
Uh, no.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have commissioner questions for the owner or the architect?
None here.
I have a few.
Mike, okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, sure, sure. I have a few question. I would like to ask the the architect. I noticed on the material board or the material. You you show some exterior finish schedule and you indicate two type of stone. One looks like a stone veneer for the front entrance and there's another. Gray stone tile, but I don't see any other places for the second type of stone. Can you clarify?
Oh, oh, sure. Yeah, those are the stone that we propose for the flooring, basically, so the front porch floor and also the patio at the back.
I see, I see. And then from what I understand from your presentation, this is Mediterranean style, right?
Correct.
Okay. Can you also describe, because I don't find it, maybe you can describe more point that where I I see some elements like roof raptor tail. Cobos on the elevation and then also the the window trim. But I don't see much detail or call out for those material. Can you can you kind of describe the cobos, window trims and? Window shutters, those detail, I mean, or the material, at least the materials.
Yeah, sure. So let's talk about the the window shutters first. So so they they are they are mostly the decorated elements and we tried to use the wood shutter and. And trying to match the color between the wood shutter and the garage and for the window trims. We try to use a recessed trim, which is very typical for Mediterranean's design. And and you can see that they have the headers and the steel trim pieces. And we try to match all the colors to be a more darker graphite color. So. So we we start with a Mediterranean's design, but we we introduce some of the more updated. Details and try to make it as smooth as and and also as minimal as possible. And let's see, so and also the what we call the the bracket details, though those are the. Those are the favor that the owner requests to to just begin a little bit more interesting. I mean, it applies in some of the Mediterranean design, but I mean, some of them are they're very expressive. They have huge raptor tails. And we tried to employ that into our project, so it's it might not be shown on the 3D model, but but I think it's on the elevation. And. Let's see if I have it on the the front and back. Yeah, so if you see that the front and the back, they they employ some of the the brackets, especially at the at the gable roof area, so.
Are those going to be those raptor tail and cobal, they're going to be wood, right?
Yes, they're going to be painted woods. Yes.
Painted or stained.
They're going to be painted at this point. Yeah, because we tried to match all the doctor. Like an ebony or a graphite's color to match the window trims, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's why I have. Thank you.
Dude or Frank, any questions? Sam?
No, none here. Frank, you want to go?
Fine. No, no questions. I'm fine.
I I had a couple of questions. Kyle, getting back to the tree in the back, which once again is. The reason I ask, it's it's a disservice to the beautiful specimen tree to have. That tree growing under and around and over. So is there any objection from the the owner or the neighbor in the rear to removing that tree and? Creating a better landscape scenario and back?
Yeah, I could definitely talk to owner about it. I mean, just to tell you, I think. That's also mentioned that we previously have a tree cut off with a separate permit. And and that is because the tree is in a really poor health and it's actually been infected. So we work closely with our neighbors to get that tree out of the way and but the tree that you mentioned. When we talked to the operators is not in in a very poor health at this time. So so they they haven't make a decision to touch it at this point. But but we can consider if, you know, if if that's that has a, you know, detrimental effect to the, you know, to the protected species in front of it.
Well, it's independent of, you know, the design of the home, but I would encourage you to. Once again, it's not very well structured, which is also a consideration in tree removal. And if it's promoting the health of adjacent trees, all the better to remove it. Um, I do have a question about your garage door. I'm a little concerned about the size, the height of that. Can you kind of describe the height on each side and the height in the middle?
Sure, yeah. Let me. Let me actually open up my drawings just to give you the accurate size. Okay. So the height of the top arch is actually eight feet. And and you know, from from construction standpoint is is basically like a regular garage door, but we have an arch. That is frame, so we have a smaller, you know, we have a lower height on either side. But we really like this arch of, you know, making it, you know, make just just give more taste to the garage door. But in terms of the construction, the header height of this garage store is eight feet. And then we curve down to about close to seven feet on both side.
It looks a little lower than that. That's my concern. It's not an aesthetic thing as much as it is a. Practical thing where somebody might run into that on the side, but.
Right, I think the requirement is six foot eight and when we get to our structural engineer. We'll put the exact dimension there, but but at least that height will be six foot eight and when I when I measure on my joint is about the same size too.
Okay, and regarding your front image, you show some images of. Your front elevation, some images of, you know, towers and front entries that were very proud. Here you have a recessed entry, which to me looks very unbalanced and skinny on the right side and. More substantial. Did you consider maybe pulling the front porch forward? Proud of the living room and having the gable of the entry express itself, so you get the true effect of the arch. And maybe get a little side light or, you know, a little light into that. Entry porch, which is going to look very dark the way you currently have it.
Right, we we do consider that initially. I mean, unfortunately, that. You know, the the right room is the study room and and our decision is to make that as our primary element with the custom size. Arch window in front and and we understand that when we push back the arch, you know, it's like part of the arch being cut off, but. But in terms of the detail of the arch, if you look at the floor plan, we try to make it a little bit plowed out. So so that the stone can actually finish from left side to all the way to the right side. If we push that porch all the way to the front, yeah, that entry will just going to be pitch dark. So so that's why we try to stay away from it.
Okay, and and then the last question, and it was already touched upon, the obscure glass that you're showing on the second story. Is that a? Just a, was there any input from the neighbors or is that something you just did on your own?
Nah, so I have done other projects in Los Altos and and this is for me, this is the best solution. Both to provide daylighting and also to respect our neighbors. We actually we actually propose that to our neighbors. And they like it because they know that we want daylighting and they want privacy. And I just want to, you know, compliment my clients that, you know, she did a lot of outreach. We we have. I mean, this is one of the project I have so many support letters and we definitely we we specifically talk to the neighbors on the right. Because we work with them in order to take out one of the deceased trees or the tree actually about to be, you know, to be dead. And and they agree on the design. You know, and as long as those obstacles windows, they are okay with it and and we have our support. We have their support letters, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of follow ups on that, getting to the windows. So I looked over the fence into the neighbors and it's kind of just a side yard. With some windows and then a light well going down to the basement. And. I can't believe I'm saying this, but I don't think the obscure glass. Enhances the the look of the house. And I don't think it functions in a way that I think people might think it functions because your client. Isn't going to be able to enjoy any views out any of the windows unless the windows are open, so they're more likely have the windows open. And the windows then are not obscure because you're looking, you know, through screens or whatever, but you still see. I think a better solution, you know, I think Jude was correct. And maybe we need more clarification. Did the neighbor say you absolutely have to put obscure glass there for us to accept it? Or you offered that up front and they said, oh, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. I would suggest, you know, going back again and speaking with them. Because I think you can have privacy screening there with the areas that there. That those windows potentially could look out to and remedy that and still have regular windows. That look good, that your client would like. um, that look good, that your client would like, they get better light. And they don't provide an unreasonable amount of privacy intrusion from the neighbors next door. And I think that's on both sides. Um, the second thing I'd like to just kind of throw out there, again, going back to what Jude had said on the front door. Um, it looks to me just sort of a tall circle top. It's gonna be dark in there. Did you guys think of potentially maybe having, you know, even that same door, but maybe a, a, a small window? Uh, you know, same style arched window in the door um, that would allow light in, that also kind of broke up just the vertical element of that front door.
Yeah, so to respond to your question regarding the obscure window, yeah, we, we, we did talk about having obscure or not obscure. But from the owner's standpoint, they actually do not, um, they do not mind about it. The main reason is because they do not wanna see, they do not wanna have the view to the side anyways. The primarily function of those smaller window are just for daylight. And uh, you know, they, they don't care if they wanna see on the, on, on either left or the, or the, or the right side, but they do wants to have the windows that is, that, that had, that they can enjoy to the backyard and also for the front, for the front bedroom, the windows to, to the front yard. Now, yeah, to, to response to the answer, uh, the question for the front door. The double door is always what the owners would like to do. And um, the problem having, let's say a transom um, window on, on top of it is that uh, is, is start to create a little bit more uh, complication in terms of um, you know, making the door and the transom work. I mean, the, the, we think that the, the door that correspond to the hierarchy of the garage looks the best. And inside a porch is actually next to our open stairs. And we have our high windows as well as our skylight that actually sheds daylight all the way to the first floor. So, so that shouldn't be an issue in terms of the daylight inside the lobby area. But as I mentioned, for the front porch, however, if we try to push out or do anything about it to make it bigger, then that front porch will be a little dark.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? I think we've gone through everybody. We'll go ahead and close that off. Um, Sean, do we have any public comment on this item?
Um, I am not aware of any public comments. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please uh, raise your hand. If you're unable to raise your hand, please unmute yourself and provide your name. Providing your name is optional.
Doesn't look like it.
No, we do not have anyone who has unmuted themselves or appears to want to speak on the item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and uh, have our discussion. Uh, Frank, why don't you start us off if you could?
Uh, sure. So uh, I didn't have a lot of questions on the project tonight. I think it's uh, pretty straightforward. I think architects done a, a nice job fitting the house into the neighborhood. I think it will fit in there well. Uh, so with that, I would just simply say I'm in, I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Sam?
Yeah, I, I agree. Uh, with Frank, I like the project. Uh, I think the work has been good. Uh, listening to the neighbors, of course, is always one issue that we're very interested in, and I think they've done it, so I'm in favor.
Okay. Jude?
Uh, well, um, in general, I think it's, uh, you know, getting there. I wish, I, I'm fixated on this entry, cause it is a feature element in the design. And getting back to your skylight, I see a bathroom directly over the entry wall and I see no connect on your roof, roof plan, your skylight is shown nowhere near an entry hall, so I don't know exactly what you're, you're talking about there. Um, so that, that entry is gonna be completely dark. It's, it's inboard. And I wish the design of it pulls the front porch forward to make it more of a feature. This house is relying on that entry for an architectural impact. So I think further study in that area is warranted, at least in my opinion. I, I'm, I'm just trying to suggest a way to improve the project and getting back to the tree. I would suggest, highly recommend that you look into removal of the tree. And then getting back to the um, side windows. Um, per Chair Blockus's comments, you know, the windows directly overlook the, the one-story roof on the right. And when the windows on the left look into a very um, mature potocarpus screening along that edge. So, in our opinion, there's absolutely no reason to have obscure glass, which is typically a last resort uh, for applicants to alleviate any privacy impact on neighbors. So just by the size of the windows themselves and the heights, you're already going well beyond what we typically see or encourage applicants to do. So I would, once again, encourage your applicant, your owner, client to reconsider the obscure glass, because to us, it looks more like a Band-Aid than anything else.
Michael?
Yeah, um, I agree with some of, some of the points uh, from other commissioners. Um, so the window, yeah, usually we see um, the applicant uh, not wanting the frost window, but in this case, they, they actually prefer frosty window, which, you know, we all don't, we don't agree. Uh, think that it's, it's unnecessary. So I'm gonna move on to some of the um, other items. I, I mean, overall, I mean, my first impression, I, I think it's good, but uh, when I look closely on the design, especially the detailing, you know, the, the level of detail articulation. You know, I, I, I think that uh, there are, you know, some, still some to be improved um, easily, you know, like um, uh, the window details, I don't see much of uh, you know, I know that he mentioned, the architect mentioned about the recess. Uh, but at the same time, see on the elevation, we have other, the, the, the seal, seal trim and then the header trim and other stuff. And then the other one I see is the um, the chimney. And I notice is a pretty big chimney. It's uh, it, it looks seen on, on the front. But it, it looks actually pretty wide from the side. So the side corner is pretty much, you know, uh, it's gonna be visible from the street. So that one, I don't know why it's need to be, cause this is, is all electric. I'm not sure why it's need to be so. So I think there are room to be uh, improving. And then lastly, I wanna point out, is the roof tile, again, you know, Spanish or Mediterranean. Uh, the last thing I, I, I wanna, I don't wanna see is the orange or the roof, the um, the one-tone color um, roof tile. So I, I, I think that uh, should be at least kind of more nature blend or mixed blend. That's what I see. I mean, it's a nice design, but if you forget about all this detail, it's gonna, gonna turn out to be terrible. I mean, if we don't get this, or if you don't work out with all the details and um, you know, have it carry out through the construction, it's, you know, it may not be look as nice as you're rendering. That's what I'm trying to s- to say here. So, that's what, that's what I have. Um, I mean, on a certain level, I mean, I, I'm in the support, but, but uh, I don't know how we can uh, enforce some of the, the materials, um. You know, the shutter, I don't want the shutter turn out to be, you say it's wood, but nothing spilled out here on the drawing or elevation. You know, the, the raptor tee, uh, the raptor, roof raptor tail, um, the material is not spilled out here. Um, the window trim is not clear. I, I know you say something, but it's not, nothing on the drawing. I, I don't have any detail on the, on the eve, typical roof eve. Um, are we gonna have those um, uh, when, re- recess windows seal, or in recess window detail with the seal, so it's the, the detail are not clear here. Yeah, a, a lot of opening the detail, that's, that's my, uh, the question I have.
Anything else, Michael?
That'll be all.
Okay, great. Yeah, I, I like the project. I, I do think it has room for improvement. I don't know, uh, you know, it seems like, you know, especially like with the windows, the obscure glass. If, if the neighbors were opposed to it, that would be maybe something different. But I think to, to go kind of first step to that, um, I, I think you're, it's a disservice to you and your client. And so my recommendation was, you know, and this is weird for DRC, you know, go with the open windows, so you can see, get natural light and blah, blah, blah. Um, but I, I think when it's built and you have that obscure glass and you're in it for a year or two, you're probably gonna go, oh boy, I wish we didn't do that. Because I think you do provide with the window size and the, the landscaping that's there and just how the houses sit uh, on either side, it's a fairly private, even though it's a substandard lot, it's a fairly private setting. And I don't think you need to have that. But uh, you know, I, I think we've told you, we don't recommend it. Um, the one thing we don't know is have input from the neighbor as to whether that really is an issue or not. So, you've had a conversation, I guess, you know, um, do what you will on, um, so, um, I, I do think that front door needs a little bit work. Um, but I think the rest of the house, uh, to me is fine. So I would uh, probably support it as it is, but I think you might be cutting yourself a little bit short. So those are my comments. Um, do we have a motion from any of the commissioners on this project?
It's, it's a tough one.
A motion made by those that have.
The only, the only thing I wanna say is Benvenu, as you go around the hook of Benvenu, the quality of homes is outstanding. There's some beautiful homes. And I think Benvenu, and I'm just saying this as for the owner, you've chosen a wa- a, a great street. And um, by the way, thirty-five years ago, my first project was across the street at six twenty-two Benvenu. So I'm pretty passionate about this street. So I encourage you to take our advice to heart. And I'm tempted here to continue the item with the direction I think a couple of us have expressed. And we don't necessarily wanna do that, given staff, you know, load and whatnot, but I think there's very simple changes here that can be done to make this an outstanding project. And, you know, it's one of these, I'm in a, I'm at a loss to, to make a motion here, so I don't wanna sway anybody, but I just wanna get out there that you're so close. It could be that much better if you just take a second look at a few of our comments. And a question to you, would you be willing to come back with a few tweaks, maybe a little more information on the detailing that Michael has suggested? Maybe a little clarification on the garage door size, maybe a little more study of the front entry. And then maybe a little more clarity from the neighbors about what they would really like to see on those second-story neighbors as well as that tree in back. So if you're willing to, you know, go one more round, we could um, suggest that we get you on the next available calendar, that per staff um, availability and move this along without further delay. That's a question of the applicant.
Sure, yeah.
Is it, yes, in agreement with, is that what you're saying?
Uh, well, for me, sure, but I have to talk to the owner.
Okay, I think the owner is on. There she is, hi.
Hi, hi. Yes, I can talk uh, with Kyle, yeah, after the hearing is done.
Okay, well.
Uh, we kinda need to.
So what we wanna do is we wanna bring you back. And otherwise, we're gonna make.
I also, yeah.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, then I think you have to make the motion.
Um, I'm gonna move that we continue this item. Sorry, I don't have the staff re- number here.
SC twenty-two, there's zero, 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 nine.
Uh, six twenty-nine Benvenu. Yes, with the specific direction to the applicant and owner to come back uh, addressing our fol- the following issues. One, to clarify the height of the garage door, to make sure it meets minimum code clearances on the sides. Two, to um, we provide a letter or some kind of correspondence from the neighbor as to what type of windows are appropriate on the second story facing the side yards, whether they prefer obscure glass or clear glass. Three is to study the front entry to uh, create better balance there, uh, for lack of a better word. Um, four is to come back with additional detailing around the windows. And then five, uh, clarify the tree, tree number twenty-two at the back, whether that can be removed. Um, uh, to improve the rear yard landscaping and the health of tree number twenty. Thirty, I think.
Twenty-three.
Yes, twenty-three. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
I, I have a question. So regarding to the windows, uh, so I just asked, oh, I'm, so I just asked the, I just asked the neighbor if on the left and the right side, right? Just ask these two neighbors, or should I ask a wrong again?
No, just, just the, the two neighbors.
Okay.
Because we are recommending not having the obscure glass, because there's, in our opinion, there's enough privacy based on the size of the windows, the location of the windows, as well as your landscaping to provide a reasonable amount of privacy for both of those properties. And we think that by having the obscure, you're just cutting yourself short of being able to have views and better light and those type of things.
Okay. Uh, so in this case, um, if they uh, like agree either ways do I need to ask them to write a letter for me or verbally agreement will be fine?
Uh, it would be best to, to just have them put something in writing that without the obscure glass, you will get better use of that space.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Um, I second the motion.
But, uh, hold on a second, Chair Blockus? Can I just make one more additional uh, direction to the applicant to come back with a roof color that's more varied, uh, versus monochromatic? Can be in the same color palette, just something more realistic versus monochromatic.
And can, and commissioners, can I please ask for the recommendation to also include that this comes back as on a date certain to
Yes.
the uh, June fifteenth meeting because of impending staffing issues for the city?
Oh, Nick, uh, June fifteenth or July sixth are, are two of our meeting dates.
Okay, um, uh, based on the, the, the work that was just described from the commission, I think these are things that probably can be ironed out within two weeks. If, if not, then we can always just continue it to a date off calendar if they cannot satisfy that. But I'd like to get this back um, to the commission quickly, since we have very specific direction for this project.
Correct. And do we have to have uh, notification, uh, two-week notification or whatever, or?
We do not, when, when as a part of the We do not when when as a part of the motion, it is made that you are carrying this item over to a date certain and specifying that date.
Okay. Chair Blockus, I would like to add that to my. Direction to come back at a date certain, preferably June fifteenth. Okay. Okay, so we we have all those items. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Jude.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Frank.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
David, hi. So it's five to zero to continue. For those items to be back in front of us by June fifteenth. Great. Okay, let's move on to. Item. Now four was three SC twenty one dash zero zero four eight for the property at four six six Raquel Lane. And who is? Project Manager Lou, could we have staff report, please?
Sure. Please let me share. My presentation and can you see my share screen?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Chair Vice Chair and Commissioners, this is Jiao, Associate Planner. Tonight I am presenting a design review application, SC twenty one dash zero zero forty eight. For the construction of a second story ADU at four six six Raquel Lane. As this second story ADU is not a typical project that this commission would review, staff would like to provide some background information. First of all, in the twenty nineteen ADU, sorry, the twenty nineteen ADU state law and the city adopted ADU ordinance. The city cannot preclude the construction of an ADU. At least eight hundred fifty square feet in size with four foot siding rear setbacks and sixteen feet in height. And then the city ADU ordinance further allows an attached ADU more than sixteen feet in height, but shall be subject to the discretionary review process. At last, as this second ADU is greater than twenty feet in height imposed by the design review process requirements. The proposed ADU shall receive DRC's approval through the public discussion process. In short, the commission can review this project as a regular second story addition, but but you cannot deny an ADU project that is no greater than eight hundred fifty square feet. So I'm going to the project details, the project scope consists of an eight hundred thirty two square foot second story ADU. With interior remodeling and exterior modifications. Exterior modifications include the incorporation of a gable roof garage and applying new hardy board siding to the two front gable elements at the first. This is the rendering showing the proposal from the street. The subject property is located on Raquel Lane between Raquel Court and Has Has Hasi Enda Way. Another note here is that the Adobe Creek is located close to the rare pipeline between the subject structure and the creek. There are existing dense vegetation. This surrounding neighborhood is considered as a diverse character neighborhood as defined in the city's residential design guidelines. The homes in the neighborhood are a combination of one story and two story. Homes with the two story homes at four seventy two Raquel Lane and five hundred Raquel Court. In this vicinity, homes have low to moderate horizontal outlines between eight to nine feet and six inches at the first story. And low play height above eight feet at the second story. Lexterial materials commonly used include stucco and a horizontal and vertical siding with stone veneer or brick accents. The applicant provided an existing and proposed streetscape elevation at the bottom of this slide for Commissioners' reference. The slides provides the the project site plan to the right and the zoning compliance table to the left. The second story addition is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. And the project meets all the zoning standards as justified in the compliance table to. So to the left. This is the proposed first floor plan, the interior remodeling at the first floor occurs at the garage and the areas under the proposed ADU. An independent access is also designed for the ADU through the staircase as required by the ADU ordinance. The second floor plan, the second story ADU will include two bedrooms, one bathroom and the living room with a standard kitchen. This slide provides the proposed front elevation at the bottom compared to the existing front elevation on top. The new front elevation at the first story will incorporate a new cross cable at the garage. New hardy board siding will be applied to the two gable elements as mentioned in the previous slide. The play height of the garage will have one foot increase resulting in nine foot and six inch play height. And the remaining of the rooms will have the same play heights. Of which is eight feet as the majority. And the other front gable to the right would remain as eight feet and five inch play height. At the second story, the new ADU will start with a seven foot and six inch play height. For for the first fronting gable and the restroom in ADU will be eight foot play height. The materials of the ADU will be stucco to match existing exterior materials. And all the roof slope will be consistent with the four inch roof pitch. Overall, the newly introduced facade is considered as an appropriate design with the within the diverse character neighborhood. By featuring identical play heights in the neighborhood, consistent exterior materials and proportionate and articulated architecture. There are two side elevations on this slide. The top one is the proposed right elevation with a setback of seventeen point five foot from the ADU to the to the right right side prop line. All the windows along this slide along the side will have a four foot and six inch sill height. Which has been considered by the DRC as acceptable sill height to mitigate privacy concern. The bottom elevation is the proposed left elevation. Plan, there are three windows with sill height varying from two feet and eight inches to three feet and eleven inches. Additionally, a Juliet balcony with a two feet in to with a two feet in depth is also proposed. As this along this this side elevation, the setback will be greater than fifty five feet to the left prop line. With additional existing screening vegetation, staff consider the windows would have not would not have. Excuse me, adverse privacy impact. The balcony, as it is so shallow, it will be considered as very passive use balcony. And should not have privacy invasion to both side and rear neighbors as well. This is the rear elevation. At the second story, two windows are proposed with the same two foot and eight inch sill height. Giving that a setback from this rear elevation to the rear prop line will be more than forty feet. With existing screening vegetation and dense mature trees. Staff found the second story windows have very minimal privacy impacts to the rear neighborhood property as well. This is the proposed planting landscaping plan. So there are a total of seventeen trees currently on site. That are greater than four inches in diameter. Nine of the trees are oak trees and are protected trees. All those described trees will be protected and retained during the construction. Additionally, eleven new evergreen screening plants will be planted along the right side prop line to reduce potential privacy impact. The proposed screening vegetation is conditioned to be planted with a minimum size of fifteen gallons. This is the materials board that the applicant provided, which has been detailed in the previous slide. And on this slide, it contains the community outreach justification. In the attachment C, the applicant hosted a virtual community meeting on April fifth. And according to the applicant, there was no comments heard in the meeting. And in attachment D, it is the required posting for this DRC meeting. So with that presented information, staff now recommends the Design Review Commission approved design review application SC twenty one dash zero zero four eight. Subject to the listed findings. So staff now concludes the presentation and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jay. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Jay on this project?
None.
Right.
I have a question. So.
Okay, let's go. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so where we don't review ADUs on a very regular basis. Can you explain to us exactly? What we can discuss and offer recommendations about versus what we can't? Just so we can make this short and simple.
Sure. So for this second story ADU, you can impose discretionary review comments? In terms of the design, the architecture, competitiveness, et cetera, but you just cannot deny this project.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jude.
Well, I do a fair amount of ADUs and the definition of ADU is for independent living. You mentioned separate entrance. But this is an entrance into the home that opens into a stair hall that's attached to the house without any separation. Typically, there is a door. That leads directly into the ADU. And there's actually fire separation between the ADU and the main residence. So I don't see any doors. I don't see any indication of fire separation. I don't see any address markers, which typically the fire and police department wants. Because this is a separate independent living unit. So can you, Ja, can you further expand on what the definition of an ADU is and does this meet an ADU?
So for an ADU, it must have an independent, it is for independent living. It must include a standard sized kitchen. It must have independent bathroom and it should have its separate entrance from the main dwelling.
Right, so once again, it's not separate, it's part of the main dwelling unit. I would expect to see an entry hall in a door. Separating the units.
So I'm sharing this this PowerPoint slide again. This is the second story ADU, which is allowed by the ADU ordinance.
Can you go to the first, can you go to the first story where the entry is?
So this is the independent access entrance for the proposed ADU and through this. This staircase. To the second story.
Do I, but there's no separation between the house and the ADU. There's no door between. Family, I can't, family room, hallway, any of that. I don't know what's going on there, but. That's not a separate unit, that's integrated. Family room and bedrooms.
So. With the attached ADU regulation, it allows, you know, internal circulation. Like a door from attached ADU to the primary dwelling. So staff consider this proposed second story ADU. Through the staircase as. Treat it as the same as the internal circulation to the primary dwelling. And it has the independent entrance to go directly to the backyard. So I'm not very sure why. It's not considered as an ADU. And also, the second story has a standard kitchen and will is conditioned that the kitchen should meet the city's standards. So hopefully I.
Well, once again, it's not a separate unit, it's part of the main house. You're allowed to have a junior ADU. But this is, once again, needs to have separation from the main residence. Either at the top of the staircase or somewhere in the entry hall.
So Jude, when we were looking at, this is Sean, Senior Planner. When we were looking at this previously, the the AD regulations don't specify that there has to be. That fixed internal connection. It does allow for an interior connection between the main living residence and from the ADU. It does not specify. But there has to be a fixed door between the ADU and the residence. While there may be a common practice in other jurisdictions, it was not a requirement in this AD regulations. And in regards to. Fire barriers, that will be part of a standard condition and that'll be part of the building permit process, so that will be reflected in the building trunks.
Well, I I have. I question that because I don't know how you get fire separation. So I will let this issue rest, but if you say this is an ADU, then I will trust your judgment on that and your trust your interpretation. So thanks.
Any any other questions, Jude?
No.
Okay. Sam or no, Michael, you had a question?
No, I don't have any question.
Sam?
No, none.
The only question I have, well, actually, I don't have a question. I can see it right here. So I don't have any. So we'll go ahead and close that off and if we could have the applicant or the applicant architect or planner, if they would like to speak.
Commissioners, I know it is late and this is the final item on the docket today. I'd like to just jump right in and Commissioner Kirk, I'd love to answer your question. Unfortunately, there was a slight issue with the image is actually there's a door tag showing there should be a door separation there. The tag is there, the door is not showing. I apologize. I'm not sure why that's happening. And I'm happy to clarify that and make sure that that door is in fact there. It is going to be a. Sliding door into a barn style because we're not aware of it needing to be fire rated door. However, if that is something that needs to be imposed, we're willing to consider that and take that into. Conversation with the owner. But there is in fact supposed to be a door between that hallway and that staircase, so this can operate as an entirely independent ADU. It is also intended to be for the client's parents. So it's one of those that they don't really need to come in from the side yard. This was the most effective way use of space and the fact that they can get in and out directly to the backyard was really what kind of appealed to this design. So if you have any further questions, then I really am happy to answer them, but the long and the short is I apologize, there's. A typo with my door not showing up and the door tag is in fact there.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Do you have anything else?
No, I appreciate appreciate all the commissioners' time and efforts. I know that it is late and Gia, I want to say thank you for your wonderful presentation and we are here to happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Is your homeowner there? Do they want to say anything or?
They're here as well.
Hi, I just want to say thank you for your time and consideration. I know you all put a lot of time into this and thank you for considering the project.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close that off. Commissioners, any questions for the architect or the applicant?
No questions.
No.
I I have a couple quick. Chair, I have a couple of quick question for the design architect. Yeah, okay. First, I noticed the chimney. Existing chimney. Looks like it's been extended to the new second above the new second floor.
Correct, so we have to do that for the code compliance.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I don't think this is gonna be crucial, but just it's a masonry reinforced masonry chimney. Are you gonna keep that or you're gonna redo the chimney?
To be, yes.
It's a good question. They all, that's an existing fireplace that we were intending to just remain and extend the existing masonry. So we have to get it above the roof height, so we were planning on doing that. I had a. So we have to get it above the roof height, so we were planning on doing that, I had a GC that I spoke with that said that wouldn't be a problem. I'm going to have to trust that the GC is capable of that. If this is an issue, we can remove it and replace it with a gas fireplace instead, that's totally fine. And in fact, we'd gain a little extra square footage upstairs, so that's not an issue either, it's not a design element.
I just want to remind, this is a more technical issue than than the design issue, so I'll anyway, so that just remind you to
Sure.
maybe get a structural engineer to look into that. Um, the second question, last question, I'm not sure if it's a graphic discrepancy or or I'm not reading it correctly. On the elevation between the front and rear elevation, A four point one, uh, I see the top of second floor. One elevation show top of the second floor, flat off and the rear elevation show it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a ridge. So I I'm not reading, why, why the front and the rear elevation for the second floor are different, front and back?
Um, so it is a gable extended over the whole building, now the the issue that we have a little bit is that the main house is sort of at an angle, so instead of being a true L shaped, it's sort of gotten this um obtuse angle to it. So on the second floor design, we tried to keep as much orthogonal as we were able to, but that front room is kicked a little bit sideways. So some of that is partially how we're looking at the angle of that second floor and how that roof is, but it really acts as a full gable over the main portion and a slightly lowered gable over that living room to the front half.
Okay, it somehow it just graphically looks strange to me, I know it's it's angle.
I do have a 3D model if that's helpful, I'm happy to pull that up if I'm allowed to share my screen.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm just curious.
Sure. Can everyone see this all right?
Yes.
So the garage ridge is not going to be a gable and then this is.
I'm talking about the the top of second floor, yeah.
Exactly, so that's just going to be a gabled in this portion here, which again is slightly skewed and then that's the gable on the back half there.
Hmm, yeah, but from the rear, from the from the rear elevation, um, A four point one,
Mm-hmm.
it 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 is somehow turning to a flat uh ridge, uh, yeah, it just look different. If you look at the 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 north elevation.
Yes, which is the the south elevation or the north elevation, so the north elevation.
The north elevation. The north elevation, so yeah.
I apologize, I'm not sure what so, what it is that looks flat, there should be nothing there that's flat, it's really truly is a gable and a second gable, that's it.
Hmm, anyway, I I think it's.
Apologies, it might be a graphical thing, um, but there's really no intent for any portion of that roof to be flat, we have no need for it, we are five feet below the maximum height limit. Um, just trying to work with the angles we've got, so.
Okay, I I think, I I think, yeah, I I also think that's a graphic discrepancy, but anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, and I have no questions, uh, so we're gonna close it, um. Sean, do we have any um public comment on this item?
I am not aware of anyone with public comments, if there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, you may provide your name, but that is optional.
Let's see, you want me?
Please, there appears to be no one who wishes to speak on the item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that off, uh, public comment and begin discussion. Uh, Michael, do you want to start your comments first?
Sure, sure. Actually, I I actually like the design, it it's um it's well playing into the uh the existing house and it's the ADUs in the back and then also follow, you you know, even though the ADUs on the second floor, you follow the, you know, meet all the the guidelines and the setbacks. Um, you know, it's just the 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 question I mentioned, I think those are more technical and the graphic discrepancy is pretty minor, so I I'm, you know, you know, fully support uh this project.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
Uh, fully support the project.
Jude?
Uh, in support, glad to hear there will be a door between the two units, that's appropriate per code and uh for Michael's comment, I think you're going to find that you have to not do a masonry chimney, it's going to be a metal flue from the firebox up, so good luck with that.
Happy to look into that, thank you.
Yeah, you will, because I I did it online and it was just single story, uh, and Frank? Frank, any, any uh comments?
Yes, uh, continuing to focus just in the design and architecture corner, I think they did a fa- fantastic job actually blending the ADU uh into the house. Uh, it it looks like it's uh well thought through and I would fully support the project as well.
Great, yeah, I support the project as well, the only thing that I I'd look at is um and it's kind of weird, the the garage itself just looks a little bit oversized uh and that's probably just the angle of the uh the drawings, so, but yeah, I support the project as well, uh, do we have a motion?
I move um, to approve item SC twenty-one zero zero four eight at four six six, four six six Raquel Lane by accepting all um conditions and findings.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's go ahead and and uh do our vote, so uh Frank?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Jude?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
David, I as well, congratulations, it passes five to zero.
Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for waiting through our earlier part to get to you, so. Okay, we are now to, do we have any commissioner reports or comments that we need to deal with? I see none. Uh, Sean or Steve, any potential future agenda items that we should be aware of?
Uh, not that I'm aware of unless uh Director Zornz has any particular items, we do have a full agendas for projects coming up on the sixteenth and we're starting to have a filled agenda for the first meeting in July.
Okay, so are we going to be able to get the prior project in for the sixteenth?
Of course.
Okay. Alrighty. Fifty. It is, uh, what, nine twenty-two and we are adjourned, thank you all.
Right.
And have a good evening.